Sarah Jones is zooming into this meeting.
I'm here.
Hannah's doing the dishes. Zooming from her kitchen. Well, Sarah's treating the.
First up, we have the Mitchell application for a lot line adjustment. Can we pull that up? Everyone can hear on online there?
Yes.
We have one member currently online. It should be Dick Hermans.
What's that?
Yeah. Thank you very much for hearing me tonight and giving me a privilege to be here first. This is a hopefully relatively simple process. We're adding approximately a half acre of property to the Stewart's one acre that they have now. So it will be increasing the size of their lot by about 50% from one acre to about one and a half acres.
Okay.
There will be a drainage easement from Stewart's back to me. Because there's a drainage going across this piece of property that is being transferred to them. So there will be the need for an easement from Stewart's back to me for drainage. And then there would be an easement over the roadway. Stewart's currently has an easement over this roadway going to the just the back corner of their lot. And that easement would be extended to the new back corner, the south, southeast corner of the lot. So that easement would have to be rewritten and extended. And then there is also a maintenance agreement that Stewart's has with me regarding that roadway. And and that maintenance agreement will be rewritten to include that portion of the road that is constructed to the back corner of their lot. The road will be extended from where it ends now at the corner of the lot to the new corner of the lot. Any questions?
The ditch, you have a ditch? That ditch you had?
Yes.
Is that water that flows through there? Is that the ditch?
There is water that flows through that, yes.
Okay.
It's an old drainage.
Yeah, but that's where does that originate from? It's this water?
That that water?
Yeah.
It comes across here and in this area right here would be the county garage. This is Route eighty three.
Okay.
The county garage is right here.
Right.
And it flows right past the county garage.
Yeah, that was all wetland.
Yeah, yeah, this is mostly wetlands in here, which I sold off previously to L. Blackburn. So this all now belongs to L. Blackburn.
The Stewart's indicate what they're gonna do with this half acre.
They they have a desperate need for parking. And that's the main purpose of it, to increase their parking.
So they're they're planning to blacktop it?
The roadway?
No, this.
That case, I don't know what they would plan to do, but they they might. It has drainage going through it and there are catch basins here. There's one catch basin at each corner and so it could drain easily. So there there could be a some drainage from that if they pave it. I don't know that that's what they're going to necessarily do.
Well, they're looking for increased parking, I would think.
Well, some of it's gonna get paid, no doubt.
So they'll have to come to the store then.
Right, yeah, they're they will, whatever they need to do with it or want to do with it, they would have to come in front of the board to get approval.
Right, but we have to take that into consideration for approving this, what the use is for.
Sure.
Property.
And this Dale, this this waterway that goes across the street to right under the thing.
Yeah, it goes across the street, runs runs along the area next to Leah's fountain view there.
Yeah, and goes all the way down to Stissin Lake.
Yes, yes.
Well, first up, does, will anyone have any more questions for Dale? Should we get the? Well, George talked to us what he sees on this.
Yeah.
George, what engineering comments?
Yeah, well, a couple of same comments that the boards had. One was a question about what the land was gonna be used for. And again, I agree, I think that the board should look at that as a whole on to make sure that it fits on what they need. They don't need a little bit more or something of that nature or look at it all as one action perhaps. I did have a question. It looked like there's a proposed right of way right next to the Stewart's and then a proposed right of way around the back lawn too. Where where are the proposed right of ways?
Well, on your map that you have here, there's there's a right of way along this roadway coming in here, which would be extended from this point to this point right here. And then there there will be a drainage easement back to me over this area right here.
Isn't there a right of way along that rear line as well? Proposed all the way to the right side of the map?
All the way over here.
Here.
Yeah.
A little more.
Over.
Yeah. It's a proposed right of way down that line.
Oh, okay, you're talking about there there is a right of way that is back to me. It's not a proposed right of way anymore. It's an actual right of way back to me.
So that's existing.
That's existing, that goes from Route eighty three, following the old railroad bed to that point there.
I thought the map I had had it labeled proposed, that's why I just wondered.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not any longer proposed, it isn't either.
That's existing.
Let's probably clear that up on the final map.
Yeah, that was, that was, this is intended just to be preliminary to have some discussion. Stewart's, the purpose of this is to see that basically there won't be any problems. So that Stewart's can decide exactly what they're going to do and then they would come back with a plan for you at that point.
George is putting a parking lot there with the drainage and permeable surface and all the things that come involved with that? Is that gonna be an issue?
Um, well, it depends on how much parking there is. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't know that they're gonna break the acre. I don't think it's an acre.
No.
That they're getting, but it depends on what they're doing overall with that property.
But that's a separate issue, correct? I mean, is that something?
Site design is somewhat separate. The only reason I would say that it would be good to look at them for Stewart's to come in, you know, again, if the board has no major issues for them to come in and do it all at once, sometimes when you go through the design, you realize I need five more feet or something, ten more feet, you know? If they do that and end up with this issue, then they're gonna be back and they're gonna be a lot line adjustment again, get another, you know, six months after they already got one. So.
Well, their their issue that they explained to me was that they didn't wanna end up
Sure.
trying to design something when they don't own the property.
Right, I understand.
So they wanna own the property first and then they would create the design once they own it.
Yeah.
Create a design and spend money for design work and everything and then not buy the property.
Right, no, I I understand what their what their position is and it's just something for the board to think about. I mean, there is obviously a plan. They came up with a certain dimension for what they needed. You could look at it as at risk, you know, and if they propose something and something comes out and there's a comment, they're just gonna have to come through and do it all over, get another lot line adjustment for, you know, in case they need it. That's, you know, really the board's purview for how they wanna look at it. And it's not against zoning, obviously.
Right.
Generally, just about anything can be engineered. But again, I have seen that that's happened and then if you have an amended map, essentially it gets filed with the clerk's office.
Right.
Pretty quick act. Yeah, well, yeah, for sure.
And that drainage thing, it's gonna go underneath the right of way driveway, whatever the.
It already does.
It already does.
That's in place.
That's in place.
No, this, this is all underground. Pardon?
I'm gonna hold it right here. And right.
It ends somewhere over here, is that right?
It goes, it goes to this point, it doesn't end. It's not underground here, it's an open swale at this point.
So here it's underground?
Here it's underground.
And then there it's.
There's a catch basin here and a catch basin here and there's a culvert underneath the roadway.
Uh, Michael?
Yeah, yeah.
Did Dick say something?
Yeah, I did. I would assume that Stewart's has looked at this to the point of knowing that the amount of land they're getting here will meet their needs and they can design something that that would be adequate to their needs. So I don't think we have to worry about it not being a big enough space, but that it should be, it should be a pretty simple process.
It would only come if we made some sort of requirement upon them where they couldn't do it what they wanted to do and accommodate the board within, you know, for whatever, I don't know, vegetation or impermeable surface or something that we require. They might, you know, need more for some, you know, some reason.
Right, I doubt that though.
Yeah, I did done this before. Yeah, I just reviewed a Stewart's up in Claverick and the exact same thing happened. They came in, they had a proposal, planning board review, public comment, they needed more land. Wasn't a big deal because it didn't purchase everything back to the land, only the line.
Right.
Mandatory. Again, it's an at-risk, everything it doesn't matter.
Everybody made a little extra money when they came back.
I'm just saying, it's just, it's which is one of those things that they have to do it.
We can't.
Come back and do it again.
All right.
It's not a deal.
Warren, do you have any comments for us?
Well, I'm assuming that we're gonna be setting this down for a public hearing. I I'd like to see all of the easements that Dale referred to shown on the map and see some drafts of that. And I I I'm not sure that it would be appropriate for the planning board to approve this, knowing that Stewart's has plans for development of this, even if it's a parking lot, without getting, having those plans or at least preliminary plans in place, cuz you're gonna have to evaluate the environmental impact of the lot line adjustment and you have to take into account what Stewart's is proposing for that lot. Otherwise, you're gonna be guilty of segmentation of your CICA review. So I'd like to see some kind of at least sketch plan as to what Stewart's has in mind. They don't have to do a full-blown plan, but we wanna see, you know, how much of that, how much of that lot is gonna be paved and what it's gonna be used for, so that you can evaluate the environmental impacts of the project.
Warren, could they, could they present that at the public hearing?
Well, they can. I mean, it would be better if we had something, you know, in our hands before so we could review it. I mean, it puts us at a bit of a disadvantage if you're asking George and I to weigh in on it to first see it at the public hearing. So, yeah, it can be presented at the public hearing.
Right, but, right, but if we get it in, you know, on email, et cetera, and then, you know, they come to the public hearing and the public sees it at the hearing.
Yeah, we'd like to see it before the meeting so that we can comment on it.
Isn't this stuff supposed to be in ten days before?
Yeah.
So I would think that would be.
Yeah, I'm a rookie at this.
Okay.
But. All right.
And the other, the only other thing I have is that we have to, I I think the town board may be interested in this because we we've had all of these issues with with this property and the easements and we have to review our files on this and the town board may wanna look at it too to make sure that everything that we had, the town board had asked Dale to do when he was last before the planning board and the town board on this has been done. So we're we're gonna wanna look at that pretty carefully.
Again, my my question is, aren't these two separate actions?
Who who who, I'm I'm not sure who's, oh, I'm sorry. And not, no, you you, they're two separate actions except for CICA review. You have to consider the impacts of any proposed proposal for the project. Otherwise, you're guilty of segmentation.
I'm talking about the lot, the lot line adjustment. You don't need a CICA review for the lot line adjustment, do you?
Yes.
You do.
It's a sub, yeah, it's a sub, this is a subdivision, really. And you need a CICA review of that. I think George had commented on that. George, I don't remember, did you send, I was away. George may have sent something to the board about.
There's a comment I had via email, just wondering what what the use of the property was.
Yeah, he had the same concerns that I'm expressing now.
But I just figured I'd ask the question.
Yeah, they're they're not, if you if you come in with a project to a planning board and you have a proposed further development that relates to that parcel or project, you're obligated to disclose that to the town, to the board, so that they can review that as part of their environmental review of the project to avoid segmentation of 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 secret issues.
All right, so how? Yeah, so we need, so we need Stuart to give us some semblance of what their plan is by next meeting.
Yeah, I don't think it's too difficult for him to come up if they're, it looks to me like they'll be looking for extra parking. That's, it's fairly obvious.
That's what Dale said.
So we just, I, you know, I think that George needs to see how much paving they're gonna do, how the drainage, preliminary design of the drainage of for for that lot. So we can see if there's any potential environmental impacts that we have to look at.
I mean, I mean, speaking for the board for a second, like, you know, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with the, in general, with the plan. It would be the specifics to make sure that they're doing, it would be okay to do.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't see.
Everyone agrees with that, right?
Yeah, I I have no problem with.
Like, oh, we're gonna want them increasing their parking lot, it was just how they do it, make sure it's done right, make sure it takes into account water and permeable surface and et cetera, et cetera, lighting, all that stuff.
We do wanna see all these easements that Dale was referring to tonight and and just a draft from from Dale's attorney as to what easements are gonna be exchanged as part of this process.
So so what we'll do now, we'll set a public hearing for next month. Does that seem like it would work for you?
Sure.
Is that soon enough time to get all the documents together?
Or should we?
No, that's not a problem.
Do you think they can come up with a plan?
I think so.
Okay.
They probably have some kind of a plan.
So you just, you'll let us know if it's gonna be a problem, then we'll just postpone the public hearing.
I don't see that it's gonna be a problem, but I will let you know. I'll talk to Drew if there's gonna be a problem.
All right, so so what we need is a motion to hold a public hearing on this application. What's today? May eleventh at seven thirty PM here.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Hi.
And we do need a part one of the environmental assessment form. George, do you wanna see a full environmental assessment form or do you think a short form is?
Yeah, I think it's to be an unlisted action, so a short one would be fine.
Okay.
Warren, just let me finish with the vote here, all all.
I'm sorry, might as well vote on everything at the same time.
All opposed to the the motion, no one's opposed, so that passes level of public hearing next month. Sorry, go ahead, Warren.
Yeah, I just, we need, was a short form EAF submitted as part of the application, Drew?
No.
Yeah, that's supposed to be.
We need a short form EAF.
Yeah. If we can get that right away, that would be helpful.
Okay, yeah.
I I don't, I don't think we need a referral to the county on this. This is not, this is, oh, hell, I don't know. We better do, I'll double check on whether we need a two thirty nine M referral because of the location of the subdivision.
This, this is the sensitive area, whatever.
Yeah.
I think we have to send it and but they'll probably just come back local concern, put it in if it's maybe.
Maybe not, yeah, I I think it's better to err on the side of caution and and do a referral.
She'll do it and if it, it might just kick it back automatically when she hits lot line just.
But but they will need the short form EAF, so that has to be submitted right away.
Right. We have to send that to them.
So in order to need a short form EAF, you need easement back to me over the.
Whatever easements are going to be changed.
Okay.
Or added or whatever.
Right away.
Right.
And.
The text of that to go to Warren.
I think you you're probably gonna, Warren, you're probably gonna wanna road maintenance agreement because you already have one, but it'll be a new one, I guess.
We we wanna see how it will be amended, so maybe you could get us just a draft of that, how you intend to amend the road maintenance agreement and allocate responsibility under that road.
Okay.
And then the Stewart, the sketch plan from Stewart and.
Sketch plan from Stewart's.
Yeah.
You want Stewart's.
Be nice if they came.
Represent.
Yeah. So get it, but they need to get us the sketch one beforehand so the consultants can go over it and we can digest it, then we'll, they'll present it at the public hearing.
You needed what, ten days before the?
Ideally, yeah.
It's supposed to be instead of one day before, so it can be in mind for that.
Ten days.
Ten days, yeah.
All right, if that's gonna be a problem with Stewart's, I'll let you know.
Let us know, then we'll postpone it.
Right. You know, I I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions?
That's it.
Anybody want a copy of this?
No, I have it digitally. Anyone want it?
Um, can, can you resend that uh copy? I couldn't, for some reason, I couldn't locate my digital copy, can uh Trish, can you resend? Well, yeah, well, actually, why don't you wait until you get the um the revised one, this should make sure that George and I get those.
Good, good night, girls. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Paul, uh first of all, I wanna just point out that we have a member Kate uh virtually here. And Ethan is here now. Ethan, you wanna come sit up front?
I can hear, I got everything.
Okay. So, next up. Uh next up is the Murphy uh lot line adjustment slash subdivision slash uh public hearing. Uh so Lyndon Chase is here representing
Yes.
The applicant uh and if you can take us through what's, there, there's been a change as to what they're gonna be doing, so.
There's been a change, we wanna make it simple.
Like that, that I like.
We don't want, we don't want the word Westchester County mentioned. What could happen there, we're, we're done with that. This is a simple, we've done it three or four times before. We're taking, we've eliminated the four one thousandths of an acre to be la- added to lot seven, that's over with, lot seven won't get anything. We're taking this two point one nine acres and adding it to lot number three.
Okay.
So lot number three will own some of the land underwater, as does when we did, when you did Wilson's. They got a piece, as did with the lounge, as with uh Fitzgerald, same thing. Never any problems with any of it, so that's why we've eliminated, we want simple.
And currently, so currently, it's attached to the peninsula property.
Yeah, that, that, right. This is coming off the peninsula property, the peninsula goes like this. We're taking that two acres off the peninsula, it's lands underwater, nothing will get built there. Unless you're scuba diving, I guess.
You're not gonna mine it?
And this is an existing road hook and.
Yes, cuz that, you, you, the last one you approved as a town was that one right there, for Fitzgeralds.
And how big was that?
That was forty feet by fifty-four feet by forty feet.
Wow. Okay.
They had a dock there one time.
Uh Dick and Kate, you guys are clear on, on the change, uh you see the map on uh?
Yeah, what we've eliminated is this right here, we're just and we're gonna hook the whole thing to lot three.
Oh yeah, that's the old map.
Right, that's the old map.
We, you don't have the new map?
No.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you, but this map still has that hook um.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not the curtain, you didn't get that.
Yeah, I don't, you have the right map, do we have the right map?
Uh Warren, I don't know if we have it digitally to project right now, we have it in front of us here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the, the one that you have on the screen is, is.
Is the old map.
The old.
Let's take that down.
Warren, it would be two point one nine, cuz that would be part of the old map.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that.
Warren, you, I, you got the old, the new map, right?
I did, and um for some reason, it came, it came in when I was gone and we didn't print out a copy of it, so I need another copy of it. But I did look at it and it's, I, it's fine. Um I don't think you'll have any problem, I drafted a resolution approving the subdivision.
George, you have any comments on the new? No, that's much more straightforward. Okay, uh alright, so that's the presentation from the applicant, now we're gonna hear, does any members of the public uh wanna speak?
Yeah. Okay, hi, I'm Ted Naskin and my wife Ruth. And uh we have the property next to the, in the cove, basically next to Jim Murphy's peninsula. So uh, you know, he sold it to us about twenty-three years ago, and we've been very happy, I can't believe it's that long, but it's very happy and we're very happy there.
Uh can I just, so you, are you to the west of? Please to be pointed out, over here, okay. Yeah, so they're over there, on the other side.
Yeah.
Yes. They're on the we- the west side of the peninsula.
Um, oh yeah, yeah.
So anyway, we love the lake, it's hard to swim muck, and I just wanted to say as far as the background of the lake. Um the lake itself does have difficult areas to swim in. And as far as background, you know, Jim's been generous enough to let people swim in his area of the lake around the peninsula, and many people do that, especially in the property in front of what he's he's planning to subdivide. This piece here is basically where everybody pulls over and goes swimming. So um to that end, um that's like the only access point. It's not a public access point, he's been nice enough not to put up no trespassing signs, so everybody just basically it's vacant land, no, everybody swims there, they launch the kayaks, canoes, bring their pets. Um floats, inflatables, everything like that from that portion happens to be a very good swimming area. And we've, you know, come to rely on that for swimming. So that's opened that south part up for more um public access and for recreation, even though it's private property. So I, I guess one of the questions I have for the board, and, and I don't expect an answer, but it's the question, I'm part of the Lake Association as well, I'm speaking on my behalf or personal behalf, not on, on the Lake Association, I think sent in a letter, somebody had some questions about what the purpose of the Lake Association was, you might wanna read that or, you know, make that part of it, I know they sent some, some comments in, but I guess the question as a planning board is, you know, how open do we want this lake to the public, because this proposal will limit access um to the, to the um public. And as far as, you know, again, I'm a layperson, you're talking about lot lines and subdivisions, and again, there seemed to be some question at the last meeting, I watched you guys um discuss it. I looked at the comprehensive plan, I looked at the parcel access, I looked at the last map, I didn't have this one. And I guess um from my point of view, it's really a um subdivision, not uh not a, a lot access, especially when it had to do, you know, dividing that piece of lake bed property into three, at the last proposal, it was three pieces, now it's only two pieces. So um when did this fall under zoning, I guess I questioned the small little piece and this small little piece for for Fitzgerald is, isn't that really too small to be considered a subdivision under the comprehensive plan? It was something like the size of dock forty by fifty feet, so I don't know how that works out into the code, it's just a question of how small, like why is one forty by fifty and one is two acres, what is the size that you're allowed to really subdivide lake bed property? And in the parcel map, it actually says that the, that it's considered one piece of property, it's not considered land and water and lake bed. It just has in the parcel map that he has thirty-two acres and I have fifteen acres, et cetera, so anyway, I'm happy to hear about the seven being off the left, cuz I think that brought up a whole other question of how close these parcels could be, how small these could be. Are people gonna be subdividing their property, lake property for docks to have like parking spaces? So it was something that I wanted to bring up about how small this can be, but that's irrelevant now that um seven is, is not considered. Um you did have questions the last time about the road access and about um the setbacks and what the town owns. And I know that a lot of these people who have docks on the lake have riparian rights because they go up to the water, and I was wondering, instead of limiting the access to the public, if it wouldn't be better to maybe extend it, extend the property and still have access to the water on that side of the lake, does it have to be a true subdivision? Does it, does the owner, I understand that they should put up a dock, there's no reason they shouldn't have a dock, I'm not against that. But should we in fact limit the access for the public? So um I guess there's a question about that trespassing, even now I have questions of that strip of land on the north side of the road. The question is, you know, who owns that, who's responsible for that, I mean, I know that's part of the planning board, you guys have all the answers, but if somebody was to put up a no trespassing sign, you're basically cutting that which is public, which is, you know, owned by the, the, the city or whatever to take care of, whose, whose property is it? And can people walk and have access on that side of the road? Even if it's, you know, it's the setback that I'm asking about. So um and if you limit the, if you limit people from having access on the south side, where are they gonna go? Right now, they can't use inflatables at the public beach, they can't bring their pets to the public beach, they can't swim at certain hours. So what happens to all those people that are enjoying the lake, if it's private property and if there are no trespassing signs? Um I don't have to talk about number seven. And so on one hand, the new owner would like a lake bed property for dock, I understand that. On the other hand, this may strictly limit to public access, perhaps there is another solution. I would like to suggest to keep the deeds in the lake the, the way it is. Jim Murphy's proposal can be redesigned to accommodate both the new landowners and people who enjoy the lake. Maybe he should give the new landowner a smaller area for dock only, maybe we need an easement, I'm not sure. Until we have a better solution, please do not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else looking to speak? Currently currently, what I look at is, it's private property. And it's just changing hands of private property, while the public has been using it through the graces of the owner. You know, it's not like we're taking something out of the public domain and, and putting a fence around it. Uh so, and as far as the size of the property uh this is hooked over a road, which makes it considered one piece of property, correct, Warren?
Yeah, the uh, the lot line adjustment is not gonna create a small lot on the, on the north side of the, of the road. Um they have, those two, that, the two lots on either side of the road need to be merged into one, into one lot. Um so, so that you, you couldn't, you couldn't utilize the smaller parcel as a separate building lot, it would just be part parcel of the, uh of the entire piece on both sides of the road.
And therefore, because of that, it's in line with the zoning requirement.
That's correct.
I mean, it's private property now, it's gonna be private property later.
Maybe the next guy, it's for sale, maybe the next guy will let people use it.
I was gonna say.
They wanna get into town, let's see the insurance, let's just sort of cover all that.
Alright, alright.
The permission can be revoked, it's not an easement, you don't.
Right, there's no easement.
With permission, the permission can be granted, the permission can be revoked, it's not like there was a legal right granted to anybody that's now being um, you know, federally drawn by this action, that's all.
But, but people with docks don't necessarily have to own the, the lake underneath. That's how the whole lake was set up, there are many people at the antlers club, there are many people who own docks and put docks for usage, don't have to own the land, lake bed.
Right, but that's how these properties are, at least at this end of the lake. Uh right, I mean, all these properties are, he owns on, on.
Granted those three other properties as precedent. The Fitzgeralds, the Coles, and the other ones, we basically tacked on when you know, they just wanted a dock, and in fact, you, you allow them to have the lake bed as land property forty by fifty feet, so they could put a dock. They didn't need to own the forty by fifty feet, so you set a precedent.
Well, well, first of all, our, our actions don't actually set precedence, so boards in the past have done things, have no hold uh on us. Uh and but uh, just as a technical, uh it's not, it's not like a court. Uh uh but uh I mean, here, I just see this, this is all blocked out. You know, lands of Bruno, lands of McNeil, I have the Wilson.
That you gave to the.
Would that, that, well, that, we, that was approved by the town in prior sessions, it was given by or sold by whoever owned the pieces at the time. Uh anyway, like I said, um so is anyone, Dick or Kate have any comments?
Um, my, my comment is, on this two point uh one acre area in the lake, what would, is there any restriction on them, like creating a marina there? What would that do?
Well, the Lake Association does have regulations.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know if a marina is accepted use. It's, yeah, it's not an approved use.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just checking.
No, it's, it's good.
Happy to see. The link.
Warren, what would stop someone from, like, if they just started filling in, putting fill in there to create like a beach or something?
Yeah, that would be a violation of the D E C regulations, you'd, they'd have to go to D E C to do, get permits to do that. And it involves issues of riparian rights, it's too complicated even to speculate at this point.
But why that size? I mean, how, how do you determine what, that it should be one acre versus two it?
Well, why they showed, I don't know, it was whatever they wanted to do, I guess, whatever deal they made. It's not really for us to I mean, it's, in my mind, it's better than a little patch with like a road hook uh down the road, I mean, obviously, that's way better, this is way better. They're all, they're continuous with the road. That's an interesting question, huh? Well.
I mean, I guess I feel.
Lyndon, do you know why they moved, they went more than just the, the land, the line?
Where's the line now, is what you're asking?
That was the, that was the edge of the. Right there.
They changed off on, sign that up. The old owner was up there.
So we're gonna make it a little bigger, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess what he's asking is, can Jim donate an acre to the town so that it can still be public access there, that's really what he's asking, right, why does this have to be two point one?
Yeah, but we can't, the town can't, well, I mean, we have to the town board. Like, can you imagine, you know, like, if, if it's an official thing, and then people, somebody goes there and grounds it?
I mean, or for, we have to put no trespassing on the whole thing and don't let anybody swim anywhere.
Well, no, because what could hap- whoever owns that property or will own it or whatever, you know, may or may not continue that practice of allowing the public to do that, but, you know.
Does the town have to have liability on the beach?
I'm sure, I would. I'm sorry, who, who are you, sir?
I just wanna say that people used to swim in front of Wilson's and the lounge.
And they don't anymore.
And they. Well, right. They, they do allow certain people to go there.
Yeah.
Right.
But.
You know, um but that's up to them.
Right.
I'm just saying, why?
But most of the other land, with the exception of the beach and of the um Lions Club, that's really, there's no other access. Except that you've been good about letting everyone use that end of the lake.
Yeah, so am I liable for letting? There was no access there, when that was, when that was the camps. I also wanna say that people pull off the road there and they throw garbage there all the time, I'm always cleaning up garbage, but I thought that the people who own this and have a house here, they're the ones that, that should control what actually happens right in front of them.
Like the other houses.
Yeah, I mean, Ken and Ruth have, they have a lot of frontage on the lake, it may not be clean enough right now. But if I, if I remember when I was a kid, that you people would just swim over there. Do you allow it today?
Yeah, come over, you're welcome.
Alright, okay, so, alright, let's get, stay on track here, so like.
And now, that's the only access, nobody else really wants you to swim there. So that's basically has been shut down for a long time, except for that one blank piece of property.
Maybe I should shut it down, maybe I should put a fence up there.
I think probably the best thing.
I think probably the best thing to do would be somehow figure out part of like the beach or the that's accessible to, you know, pets or something in the long run, because everything, as we've said, is privately owned, so.
That was one of the comments made by Rachel and Sean. Not necessarily restricting Jim because it's his property. He can sell it and do whatever he wants.
And you have to remember too, is that if it wasn't for the Lions Club, there would be no public access to that lake.
That's right. As it's turned out, you're exactly right.
Because it would be all privately owned. And nobody would be having access to.
Although Jim did sell a piece to, uh, on the west side of the lake, at the bottom of the mountain out there, right?
The hostel.
Fossil. Sissy Mountain Properties.
Right.
Ethan, do you just finish what you were saying? So what, what is that?
The comment was made to put something, because they, at the, there's problems with swimming from the beach. You cannot swim from the Lions Club. So the comments that they made was to put something adjacent to, directly adjacent to the town beach, which doesn't involve this property at all. But helps alleviate the issue that is being brought up about lake access and being able to swim.
What about the public? That, as you know, that's right close to the road. Most people who go in and out there, they're walking in the road.
Okay.
Is it possible to write an easement to this particular property? The two point, whatever acres that is being subdivided?
To who? To the public?
We don't want the liability.
All right.
So what is the issue for today?
The issue is, well, drill down is that, you know, do we approve this lot line, lot line adjustment?
I think we meet the zoning requirements.
My understanding is real property is okay with it as well. They didn't, like, they weren't gonna file the other one, they said, but, uh, my understanding is.
Oh, Warren, did you, did you send them this updated map or?
No, no, I didn't have the. Yeah, it's straightforward. I mean, that, this is not a problem. The problem that they had, uh, and what we raised, uh, before is that it's unusual, um, to, to hook in properties on either side of the road where you have one on one side of the road. And then down the road a bit, uh, you have the other one that you're hooking in. And that's what they, they will not.
If they saw the new map.
They won't permit, but this is pretty standard. I mean, we do this all the time.
You expect them to not have a problem?
I don't think they'll have a problem.
Okay, so.
Theoretically, this space between here and here is still Jim's space. And will the public have access there or you'll put up no trespassing?
What's up to Jim? All right, so, does that?
I wanna say one thing. I do have somebody that wants to buy the mensual. And it could be public property. I'm not gonna say that that's final now, but it's, you know, it's, uh.
All right.
I'm not saying it's public property for people going there to put beach and swim.
Okay, uh, so, uh, any other public comments before we close the public hearing? All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Warren, uh, so I take it the board is, is apt to approve this lot line adjustment from what everyone said?
Yeah, that's up to you. I drafted the resolution, uh, with you waiving the public hearing.
Well, I did not, I actually did not see the resolution. When did that?
Oh, I sent it late this afternoon.
So what, what did you say? Wave? What do we have to wave?
Uh, does Trish have the, uh, the resolution? I, I sent it to.
Yeah, that's a bacon approved one.
Right, so that's empty.
This is Fitzgeralds, this is Fitzgeralds, this is Fitzgeralds.
This is Fitzgeralds, this is what it's all.
Yeah, it's kinda weedy, grassy.
All right, yeah, so, uh, so we gotta strike that part about the public hearing, right? Cause we had a public thing.
Well, you didn't renotice it for a public hearing because it's in, it's an amended application, but, but you're waiving the, the, the public hearing. Because theoretically, if they come in with an amended subdivision, you're supposed to have a public hearing, but you can waive that. So that's what I put in the, uh, resolution, even though you did take public comment today.
Okay.
It's up to you. I mean, you don't have to waive it. We can shut it down from public here. I, I know Lyndon will be very happy with that.
Yes. Go back. One simple word. Do I need to get the blood first?
And parcel seven A was to become part of some. What's seven A?
Seven A is gone.
Yeah, I, 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 we, it might be a little confusing because I, uh, we took it from the notes on the map. Uh, and we rushed it out this afternoon because I thought that you might wanna have it. Um, so, uh, but, so the whereas that refers to seven A, that was the first application. And then, uh, in the one, two, three, four, five, six, whereas we, we, uh, referenced the revised application. And we took that from the notes on the map. So it's only three A, that's the subject of this.
Oh, it was as follows, I see. So this is not.
Yeah.
So we should keep that in there.
Yeah.
There's always submitted a revised. All right, well, we have to do a secret now? Or, or make a declaration about it, right?
Yeah.
And this is what, Warren?
I put that in the resolution, the secret declaration, but you can just, I mean, do you, you see any environmental impacts? Didn't I put that in? Yeah, I did, yeah. So, uh, if, if you do, if you don't see any environmental impact, did you go over the part two? I guess you could do that, uh, to be technically correct, if you have that.
You see, oh, here it is. Determine this action was, oh, so we could just do that in the resolution, determine it's.
It's, it's in the resolution, but you might wanna just, uh, go through the questions from part two. We have that already, don't we? We have the part.
Okay. All right. Board members, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No, everyone just speak up if you have a problem on the side. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on environmental, uh, environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing private public water supplies? No. Uh, or public private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural? Or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action in the, in an adverse cha, uh, sorry, result in adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Uh, therefore, I'm going to uh, check the box that says, uh, we have determined based on the information analysis above and any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Is, uh, are we all on mute?
Uh, we can hear you, Dick. What's up?
I just, you, you disappeared.
Uh, when?
About ten seconds ago.
Oh, so you heard all the questions, right?
I did. All the questions sound just fine.
Okay. I'm just, I'm filling this out, so probably why it's not. Okay. All right. I will now read the resolution that we'll be voting on. Town of Pine Plains Planning Board, resolution approving lot line alteration application of James A. Murphy. Whereas James A. Murphy submitted a proposed lot line alteration survey map for approval to the planning board on or about January twenty first, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the proposed alteration was as follows. Parcel three A, two point one nine acres is to become part of parcel lot. Number three, six point six acres filed map number four, five, five, six B to be consolidated by a legal instrument into one total lot of eight point seven eight acres. And parcel seven A, point zero nine acres was to become part of part and parcel of lot number seven, one point two acres filed map number four, five, five, six A to be consolidated by a legal instrument into one total lot of one point three seven acres. And whereas the town scheduled this matter for a public hearing on March ninth, twenty twenty-two and forwarded a copy of the proposed lot line alteration to the Dutchess County Real Property Tax Service to renew said proposed subdivision in that the parcels to be combined were not contiguous and were not across the public highway from each other. And whereas the application was rescheduled for continuation of public hearing on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the planning board has been notified by the Dutchess County Real Property Tax Service that if the subdivision is approved by the planning board, the county will not combine these parcels as proposed. And since they are not contiguous or across the public highway from each other. And whereas the applicant has submitted a revised proposed subdivision, which provides to adjust the boundaries of parcels, one, three, four, two, zero, zero, dash, six, seven, seven, one, dash, zero, zero, dash, nine, seven, one, eight, two, seven, dash, zero, 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 zero. And one, three, four, two, zero, zero, dash, six, eight, seven, one, dash, zero, zero, dash, zero, five, five, seven, five, eight, dash, zero, 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 zero. And not to create any further lot line alteration of said lands. And that parcels three A, two point one nine acres is to become part, uh, and parcel of lot three six point six eight acres as shown on filed map four, five, five, six A to be consolidated by legal instrument into one total lot and tax identifier number consisting of eight point eight seven acres. And whereas the planning board has reviewed the said revised application and forwarded the same to the attorney to the town and to the town consulting engineer for advice and input. And whereas the planning board has determined that the proposed lot line adjustment is acceptable to the planning board and should be accepted for filing by the Dutchess County Real Property Tax Service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the said proposed lot line adjustment as stated above without the need for public hearing, which the planning board has determined can be waived. And be it further resolved that the planning board has determined that this action will not result in any significant environmental impact. And that an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. And be it further resolved that the lot line adjustment is approved, subject to the condition that our appro, uh, appropriate merger deed is submitted to the attorney to the town for his review and approval and filed in the Dutchess County Clerk's office. And be it further resolved that all escrow and filing fees are paid in full. All right, uh, so I'll now take a roll call vote. Dick?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Steve?
Yes.
Oh, this is old. Ethan? Ethan?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Resolution carry. Eight, uh, seven, zero. The only reels, don't worry about those other changes.
Okay.
That was, we left that in. So just Ethan's name has to be added. Okay, uh, so that, uh, resolution is passed, lot line adjustment is approved, please pay escrow and fees or whatever. Money, money, money. Uh, only money that we spend. It's not money that does anything for us. Uh, but Tricia will be in contact. Uh, let's make sure that's added to the, uh, to the Dropbox. I apologize, I thought that was, uh, whatever. Whoever wants one could take one. Of course, we need. But I mean, I have to yet sign the ones we know, so. Uh, yeah, just commenting, uh, my own two cents on it, you know, it's, it's really great that Mr. Murphy, all these years, has let the people swim there and all that. And you, you like to see that sort of thing, especially in a small community like ours, you know, where, you know, just don't have to have this official thing or whatever and lawyers involved and all that. Just let the, you know, you don't, it's kind of a disappearing thing probably. But, and hopefully, the next people, whoever buys that piece or whatever, will be accommodating. It is, it is what it is. It is private property, so we, we don't have to say it. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Keep well.
All right, Warren, is nothing else for you, right, for us?
No, I'm gonna take off. See you guys later.
Okay. All right, take care. Drew, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
I'm trying to think if I have any questions for you. Oh, we're still waiting for the, uh, we're still waiting for the county up at the, uh, uh, market?
Oh, the state.
Uh, the state, sorry.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Jack in the last few weeks, but yeah, the last I talked to him, he had not heard back from them. And then we, um, I'm glad you brought that up, because that made me think, realize, um, we will be looking for Sissing Center next month to be back with a amended site plan.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Drew.
Good night, everyone.
Night. Did everyone get, or to review the February meeting minute, George, uh, you don't have anything further for us? Or you can probably go if you wish, otherwise you can sit if you want. Does anyone have any comments for the February meeting? Uh, minutes? All right, can I have a motion to approve the February minutes? All in favor? All opposed? The February meeting minutes have been approved. Uh, Sarah, anything from the town board?
But the only, um, issue I have is I, I believe that the, um, solar, the amended solar law, um, draft was circulated to the planning board. And, um, I'm just wondering if anybody has any comments, um, that they wanna, uh, send to the board, give to the board.
You know, I don't think I did circulate, I don't think it's gone to the board. I, I should, I circulated to the Z, the, the CRC. You want me to send it to the planning board? You want me to send it to the planning board?
Oh, I don't know, I I I I misread that 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 thing, if it didn't go to the planning board, that's probably alright. But we are anxious to move forward on that, um, and I.
I'll send it to the board to see if anyone has any comments.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good. I I I don't think there was any, any, I didn't, I read it fairly carefully and and I didn't find any problems with it. Um, I think it's a good thing to.
And the previous meeting is up, right, on uh, the town, the the boards? The town board workshop is up on your YouTube channel, right? The town boards work YouTube channel? The workshop meeting from a month ago?
I I assume it is, I don't, I I don't know personally, I don't have personal knowledge of that, since I was there.
No, we had one here where we reviewed with uh, B F J, we worked on the law. And there's gonna be another one on Wednesday, I mean, sorry, alright, uh, uh, next Monday, on the eighteenth. There'll be another Z, uh, standing Z R C meeting regarding the solar law. And I guess they're also gonna work on the uh, the the marijuana law.
Okay, okay, okay.
On Monday, so, but I will, I'm sorry, I'll send that to the board.
It's alright.
Town workshop?
The town board workshop, Monday at seven o'clock here. Uh, okay, uh, alright then, if that's it, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.